I'm Tom Donnelly. I'm the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners. Glad to be with you here in Estes Park this evening for the second of our new town hall meetings that the Board has been rolling out. We're grateful to be able to spend some time here with you today. A decade ago, when I first was elected county commissioner, someone gave me some sage advice, and I think it was Fred Mars. I was trying to remember who it was. I think it was, if any of you know Fred, he told me, he said, "There's only two rules you've got to remember, kid. One is never have a meeting before 9:00 a.m. and never wear a tie." And so, for 10 years, I've tried to hold to those two rules. Tonight, my apologies for the tie. He took his off when we were at the restaurant. But as a means of explanation, the Board actually met with our newly-elected congressman, Joe Nagus, this afternoon, and so we wanted to look our best. And then we also took our official Board of County Commissioners portrait, and so we wanted to, we wore ties and those. So that's, there's my explanation of our dress this evening. So I hope you feel like we look absolutely smashing and are going to make a great impression on you when you look at our website to see the Board's picture. I should introduce my colleagues on the Board of County Commissioners. John Kafalos is Commissioner for District 1, brand-new, four-and-a-half months into the job, and my colleague Steve Johnson, Commissioner for District 2.
Old, brand-old.
From the county with us is our lovely county manager, 2019 Woman of Distinction for Northern Colorado, Linda Hoffman, she's here with us. County Public Affairs Manager, Shel Byrd is here with us, and Eddie, give her a blast of applause. Matt Lafferty is the Principal Planner at Larimer County. He's going to be here to talk about our comprehensive plan. And aren't you supposed to be? Leslie Ellis is actually our Community Development Director. She's supposed to be on vacation. This is apparently where she's vacationing, so we're glad to have those two with us as well. Yeah, this is a nice vacation, so. I saw Dr. Sinick, Maurice Sinick, from the Estes Valley Town Board is here. Yeah. And the short timer. He was our county manager for, I think, 18 years.
It was Frank.
Really led the county through into the modern era, and Estes has been so fortunate to have. Frank Lancaster is your Town Administrator. Glad to have you with us tonight, too. The meeting is really scheduled to be two hours. I want you to try to be mindful of your time, and we're trying to break it into a couple segments. First, Larimer County is going through a strategic planning process, and we developed a strategic plan for 2019 through 2023, and we would like to give you an update on the work that's going to be done on that front. And then we plan to, maybe the second half of the meeting, just open it up for maybe a broader discussion, a question-and-answer type of format where folks can really, who showed up with specific issues can get their questions answered. Before we kick off, I'd ask my colleagues if they have any introductory remarks. Commissioner, do you have anything you'd like to say to start? Go ahead, John.
So I just want to say thank you very much for being present. This is a wonderful turnout. This idea of an open house with all three Commissioners being present is part of our effort to be more available to the community. And so, we did our first open house two months ago at the Old Town Library in Fort Collins. We had a good turnout, and it was a good discussion. We're here tonight, and then in two months, we'll be in Loveland. So we're trying to move around the county, and again, doing our best to be available to folks. So I appreciate you supporting that effort and engaging in community dialogue. Also, there's a, some of you have already checked in here, but there's a bunch, there are a bunch of handouts. One of them is a summary, a six-page summary of the strategic plan that we'll talk about tonight. So at some point, you may want to come by and take a look at that or pick up a copy. We only have one copy left of the Resource Guide regarding aging resources, and then there's some other materials that you might find of interest. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here.
Commissioner, anything? Okay. So maybe to talk, before we talk about where we're going, we'll talk about where we've been, and I've asked our county manager, Linda Hoffman, to give you a brief update on our previous strategic plan that we just concluded work on. So Linda?
Thank you, Commissioner. So Tom knows I'm a little bit of a strategic plan junkie, so the county undertook.
I think the word is nerd.
Nerd. There are any number of labels that would fit, but a few years ago, in 2013, we adopted a five-year strategic plan, and we did that at a time when we had just had the High Park Fire. We didn't know that the flood was ahead of us. We were facing some financial difficulties, and it seemed like maybe less than an opportune time to do a strategic plan, but we said, "Go forth," because there's nothing like focus that will drive funding. Because if you're just shooting at shiny objects, if you're, if you don't have a prescribed list of things that are really important, it's easy to either, I call it, buy stocking stuffers instead of put the, those big bicycles under the tree. So we went through a plan process, and we ended up with seven goals last time around. We had 23 objectives, and we approached strategic plans in a little different way. A lot of organizations will put essentially everything they do in their strategic plan. And we don't do that, because we will always fund our core services first. We will always continue to provide at least as good a level of service in every area as we do today until we learn from the public that we should stop doing that, in which case we will. But that package of core services, we will always do first. On the other hand, the strategic plan are kind of the extracurricular goals. They're the debate squad, and the volleyball team, and the drama club. Those are the things that we're going to put some effort into for a short period of time to really pull the community forward. And what we saw last time was some of the needs that we saw as short-term have now moved over into that core services bucket. So for example, when we did the strategic plan in 2013, the county didn't really have a defined role in economic development. Now we do. Now we're a regional convener. Now we're bringing people together. The team has already won an international award for how well that they coordinate. So that's an example of how we moved something from a short-term strategic plan goal into core services. We did the same thing with emergency management, and we did the same thing with behavioral health. So those are three of the objectives under the old strategic plan goal, and I'm equally excited, equally nerdy, about the new strategic plan, and the Commissioners are here to tell you all about it. So I hope that you'll find things in there that you'll want to work on with us in your community, and things that we think will, will pull the community into the next decades in good order. So that's my introduction.
Thank you, Linda. So there broadly are three goals that the Board has established, and underneath all those goals, there are multiple objectives. And so I think we'll each just take a turn talking about our specific goal and the, and the things that we hope to accomplish as far as moving the county forward. The strategic plan, I think, is safe to say, if you want to look for one overarching theme, it's addressing some of the, some of the aspects, more negative aspects of growth. And so, we've really looked at, we've really looked at growth and changes that have been occurring in the county, and looked for areas that we felt the county could actually have an impact on addressing some of the more negative aspects of growth. So goal number one is talking about public infrastructure. I am the goal sponsor for that goal. There are four high-level objectives that reside in this goal. The first looks at regional transportation. Perhaps not as much of a noticeable need here, since you're primarily, you know, you're primarily accessed by the state system here, but in the county, where we've seen tremendous growth in the cities of Fort Collins and Loveland, and even in Wellington and Berthoud, and in Weld County, we see a lot of people living in one community and working in another. In fact, we, there was some data that was presented to us, the Board, recently that said 50% of the people in Fort Collins actually leave Fort Collins every day for work. And in my hometown of Loveland, 75% of the people leave every single day, including me. I drive to the county courthouse. Yeah, and if you go to one of those small towns like Wellington or Berthoud, it's over 90% of the folks leave town for work. And so, we really have, we have a regional economy, and I know the guys from the EDC could probably attest that a lot of your workforce doesn't live here and is commuting in. And so, we have a, we have a regional economy, we have a regional workforce, and we need to begin to address how those folks are able to get around throughout the county and beyond. We have convened a task force to study really regional needs. That's been made up of representatives from all of the, of the communities. We've had a policy group, which is made up of elected representatives. We've had a technical group, which is made up of, you know, engineers and technical staff to look at these transportation issues. The county has actually developed a regional infrastructure project list. I have a copy of it here, if anyone would like to see it during our break. Estes Park contributed and participated in those meetings as well. We've developed the project list. Now the Board is trying to determine what we do to try to fund those, those needs. We've, we've had some discussions about finding a mechanism to fund, to fund millions, frankly, millions of dollars in unmet needs in our regional transportation system, and we will be moving forward with, with some kind of potential solution in the coming months. Secondly, I know something that would be of issue or of interest to the folks here. Our county landfill, as everyone knows, is, is a few short years away from, from reaching the end of its usable life. Commissioner Johnson was actually the, Larimer County's representative on our, on our solid waste working group that we had convened for several years, and has developed a strategy to deal with our county's waste system post-closure of our Larimer County landfill. It's a, it's a pretty innovative plan. It includes a lot of diversion of things like food waste, of, of, what do you call it?
Construction.
Construction materials and debris, and the reason for that is because that, you know, most, if you, a bag of trash can be compressed, right? Concrete and shingles and two-by-fours cannot be, so they, they take a tremendous amount of space in our landfill. So, you know, so things like food waste, lawn clippings, construction debris, recyclables, we've developed a plan to start removing those from the waste, the waste stream prior to landfilling. The county, decades ago, actually acquired a site to establish a new landfill. It's north of Wellington, several miles, so it's a long haul. The, kind of the neat thing, or the real convenient thing about our current county landfill is it's situated right between Loveland and Fort Collins. Of course, you could never do that now, right? But back when they did it, they were able to, they were able to open it there. So, you know, the, the big cost, obviously, of landfilling is trucking the waste, and so we want to try to divert a lot of the things so we don't end up hauling, hauling them farther. We want to, we want to haul full loads and, but less loads at the same time. And so, we're developing a plan to really implement that in the next couple of years to, to start transitioning from our old landfill facility to this, to this new system that we've got and, that we're going to have in place. Pretty exciting. And if you want to say anything, just pop right in. Okay. Another issue that I think that, that might be on the minds of folks in Estes Park is really looking at rural infrastructure and how that's delivered. The county is urbanizing, everyone knows that, and that growth is not just occurring in the cities, it's occurring even in the unincorporated areas of the county. We find that there's a real need for, for services of a higher level than has typically been considered normal in an unincorporated setting, things like rural broadband, right? And so, the county was happy to, to work to the extent we could, work with, with Estes Park on their creation of their district, which includes a pretty, pretty significant amount of area in the, in the county. We're working with, with Loveland and Fort Collins on similar types of service area boundary agreements. Also, we have a lot of areas in the, in the county where they don't receive local street maintenance, and so we're trying to figure out what to do with those kinds of situations and rural subdivisions that don't receive county road maintenance. And then finally, we have, we have issues, not, not here, obviously, but Red Feather Lakes is a great example of a place that has significant storm wa, I'm sorry, sanitary, sanitary sewer and water service issues. A lot of those, you know, the lakes up there, a lot of those places were built 100 years ago, frankly, and they don't really have functioning septic systems or anything like that, and, and so you get, you get, you can understand what I'm saying. It's a, it's kind of a messy deal, and so it doesn't mix very well with the lakes and Red Feather Lakes. And so, really, something does need to be done to kind of, to start getting in front of that. You know, and it's surprising, it's one of the more affordable places to live in the county, so a lot of younger people who can afford to live in Fort Collins are living in Red Feather Lakes. And we've been, I mean, they've been fortunate for the past several years that we haven't had a real serious winter, and they've been able to commute back and forth for work. But as, as that growth occurs up there, absolutely, I think that the county's charge, it's an unincorporated community, it's not, it's not an incorporated city or town, and so it really does fall to the county to try to find some solutions to some of those issues. And then finally, or is that everything? Did I talk about everything? Oh, watershed management. Yeah, that's, that's my final goal. I have my head cheat sheet here. As, I don't need to tell anyone in Estes Park that, that more needs to be done to mitigate the efforts of flood, flood-related hazards. And so, the county has, has made significant strides to try to improve our, our emergency services program within the county. We have some very specific examples of, of areas where we, where we have significant concern. For instance, north of Wellington, there were some, there were these big dams that were built by the NCS, NRCS, Natural Resource Conservation. It's not even called that anymore, I don't think, right? Well, is it called, it's not called, is it? Is it, is the NRCS? So that's its new name. Anyway, the Natural Resource Conservation Service, the federal agency, built these big dams, which actually did a lot of, did a lot of good to help mitigate a lot of flooding in Wellington. They, in the 60s and 70s, they had tremendous flooding, and they actually, you know, people lost their lives. I mean, it's hard to believe out there on the plains like that, that, that they had such tremendous flooding, but they did. Anyway, those dams have really served their purpose and have, have functioned very well. But, you know, things that were done 30 or 40 years ago, the best practices at the time didn't usually include long-term maintenance and things like that. And so, we've got dams that are, that are getting fairly aged, that have no, no one really has been doing the needed maintenance on those. And not that there's a danger, don't call anybody down there and tell them there's going to be, something happened, but, but the county does need to, at least convene a group to look at, to look at taking, taking some action to make sure that we're maintaining flood control structures and things like that. So that's really kind of a broad overview of, of goal number one. I'm going to, I'm going to turn over to Commissioner Kafalos, who's doing goal number two, and then after Commissioner Johnson finishes, we'll, we'll open it up for questions with regards to the strategic plan, right? And then, and then we'll go, anything else? Anything you want to talk about, we'll be happy to talk about after that, right? So John, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Tom. You can all hear me fine? So I am the executive sponsor of goal number two, and basically, goal number two reads as follows. Everyone in Larimer County has access to economic opportunities and a vibrant quality of life. We will work together to remove barriers. So this particular goal is centered on, you know, how do we make sure that folks have access to economic opportunities? How do we remove barriers? We know that the population is growing in Larimer County. We know that we have a changing demographic. More of us are getting older and sometimes crankier. I think one demographic is by 2025, perhaps one, 26% or 25% of the county will be, somebody needs to correct me on this. I'm not sure if it's 65 or older, or 60 and older.
Sixty and older.
Is it 60 and older? So, so that's an example of a reality that we need to be mindful of and we need to be addressing. So that's the overarching goal, and within that goal, there are four more specific objectives. And let me, let me share a little bit about that, and then the more detail that you want, we'll, I'm happy to provide that in the, in the dialogue. Objective number one, within this goal number two, deals with community health, well-being, and resilience. And basically, what we're talking about there is that within the next year or so, and we're working on this, we would develop a tool, a metric, you know, a variety of metrics to determine how do we assess community well-being, resilience, community health, and those kinds of things. So that's, excuse me, objective number one, and again, we are making progress. We have formed these various objective teams that are, so we are the, the executive sponsors, and mostly, we're around for show, but we do, we do engage in all of that, but we have what I call goal stewards. And for example, in my particular goal number two, the goal steward is our Assistant Director of Department of Health and Human Services, and she has an objective team that are made up of county folks, but also made up of a lot of community folks, because a lot of the objectives that we're trying to address in goal number two are very community-related. I mean, all of this stuff is community-related. So that's the first objective, about community health, well-being, resilience. And there are some specific things, and I can answer those questions if you're interested. Objective number two, within this overarching goal, deals with workforce development, but in particular, workforce development as far as supporting people with disabilities. I bet we can all, we all understand that persons with disabilities, especially people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, often face different kinds of challenges, and their unemployment rate tends to be much, much higher than the overall unemployment rate or the employment rate, if you want to look at it in that regard. So we are focused on addressing workforce development, particularly in terms of folks with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And the idea is that, you know, one idea is that we would establish a pilot program within the county to overcome barriers that already exist, to help hire folks who have intellectual and developmental disabilities. An example of that, if I may offer an example, I told Commissioner Donnelly I would do five minutes, so somebody, if my wife was here, she'd be on the watch and she'd be.
It's a Kafalos five minutes, which means 15 minutes.
Okay. I'll just, I'll just move it right along. I just think this stuff is really interesting. But please keep in mind, the takeaway is that objective number two, as far as economic opportunity, is trying to address some of the issues that folks face, especially folks with intellectual and developmental disabilities. The third objective is an issue that I know has risen as a top, as a priority issue in Estes Park, and that is access to quality and affordable childcare. I believe I've heard something about that up here, and you're looking at some really creative ideas on, on how to address that. So you should know, the takeaway here is that the county is also very interested in that, because if you look at all the various workforce development strategies, the Talent 2.0, Regional Workforce Strategy, we know that some of the biggest challenges, and Commissioner Donnelly alluded to this, you know, for folks to engage in the workforce is, is access to childcare, quality childcare, affordable childcare, housing, of course, and then certainly, transportation issues and all of that. So objective three deals with childcare, and I'll let it go for now as far as some of the details, because I don't want to get too much into the Kafalos five minutes. The fourth, the fourth objective deals with another topic that I know is very relevant up here, and frankly, it's relevant throughout the state of Colorado, and frankly, it's relevant throughout the country, and that is the lack of affordable housing, workforce housing, housing affordability, however you want to frame it. And so, we are looking at ways of, of elevating the role of the county in partnering with local jurisdictions, in partnering with public and private, you know, to figure out, how do we address housing inventory? How do we address housing stability? And so, for, and also, how do we address a role that the county has, is providing human services? So we know that one of the successful best practices with helping folks who are homeless, you know, have security, get off the streets, and basically have a meaningful life, is this idea of permanent supportive housing, of housing first. And, and that basically means that we, we try to support folks to get into housing that's affordable, but we also provide what are called wraparound services to help address whatever kinds of issues folks might be dealing with, whether they be addiction issues perhaps, alcohol-related issues, mental health issues, and so forth. So this is something that we're working on. It's part of goal number two, economic opportunity. And I'll just offer, if I may, this is the last thing I'll say. Am I over my five minutes? Am I, am I over my five minutes?
No, you're only at two minutes. You're only at two minutes.
Don't, don't give me too much space, because we, it's important that we hear from folks and we have, you know, dialogue, especially on the stuff that's vitally important to you all, and I know there are some issues that will come up. But just to offer two examples of where the, the county is currently involved, and that is, for example, recently, the Housing Catalyst, or Fort Collins Housing Authority, they did a, an open house on, on an affordable housing development on West Horstoon. It's called Village on Horstoon. And here's an example, where public-private partnerships, the county had a role because we provided what are called private activity bonds, and private activity bonds are often necessary to leverage affordable housing tax credits, to provide incentives for private folks, you know, to, to put money into these, these projects, because depending on the level of affordability, it generally involves some kind of, you know, public investment. And so, we provided private activity bonds, and that helped result in 96 apartments. People are living in those apartments, they have families, they have kids, intergenerational, and that to me is a perfect, okay, I'll just give one example, because you're all making fun of me. I have another example, but if you're interested. You know, when I worked in the legislature and we had committee hearings, and people went over their time, you know, we knew to ask, say, "Okay, could you answer this question?" That's how they could actually finish, finish their testimony, but we won't do that here. So in summary, this is part of our strategic plan, and the last thing I'll say, I promise, is that this, these are five-year, quote, "stretch" goals, but they very much align with our comprehensive plan. I think many of you are familiar. This is our update of the master plan, 1997, and essentially, it's creating a 20-year vision of where the heck we want to see the county with all this population stuff, with all the changing demographics, with all the sustainability issues. So the 20-year comp plan, which will be adopted this summer, along with the strategic plan, there's a lot of alignment there, and the issues like housing, like how do we address, you know, the, the population growth, that, you know, we're trying to look at that in the next five years, and we're trying to look at that in the next 20 years. Thank you very much for listening.
So you can see, we kind of have a little bit of fun with each other. We're together eight hours, 12 hours a day sometimes, so you kind of have to have a sense of humor in this business. So last year, the previous strategic plan had several goals that Linda usually says were outward-facing goals, similar to Commissioner Donnelly talking about the transportation infrastructure. That's an outward-facing goal, affects the community at large directly, and Commissioner Kafalos talked about affordable housing and childcare, another outward-facing goal, very important to many people in the community. We also want to make sure we're modernizing the inner workings of county government to keep up with some of these demographic changes and some of these technological changes in the community. So I have an inward-facing goal. Might not think that's much of interest to you, but actually, it is. And it has five objections, five objections, five objectives, and let me tell you, the first one is probably the most interesting. And the county did a facilities master plan recently at the direction of the county manager. Once all the natural disasters were over, we had a time to stop and think about our own situation a little bit. And with, with the growth of the county, we wanted to make sure that the facilities of the county were in a good position to meet the needs of the next generation. A lot of population growth, a lot of technological growth. So really, for the first time in a long time, we looked at all the building facility needs of the county, and what it would take to meet a growing population, growing caseloads in the Justice Center, for example. So that unfortunately came back with a large, multi-hundred-million-dollar price tag. So how do we fund that is the, is the question of objective number one. So facilities may sound boring, it may sound like, "Oh, you have another building." What, how boring is that? But facilities actually are very central to public policy, and I want to give you one example. About eight years ago, we built an alternative sentencing unit in Fort Collins, right next to our jail. to our jail. And we built that with cash, by the way, no debt, no borrowing of any money. We had saved enough money in reserves to pay for that, which was nice. That was a pretty small project. But it was more than just a facility. It affected policy, because by having an alternative sentencing unit, we could offer to our judges a different way to handle folks that had violated the law, that maybe didn't need the expensive alternative of a jail, maybe needed a less restrictive situation. That would allow, that's not only saves taxpayers' money, but it might allow them to serve their sentences at night or during the weekend. They could go out during the day and do their job and come back at night, continue to support their family, so the family doesn't go on public assistance. So what looks like a facilities question actually opened up a lot of really good public policy opportunities for the county. My second objective is workforce needs, and I should have told you what the overall goal is. The overall goal is Laramo County government is ready to support the future service needs of our leaders, excuse me, of our residents and visitors. So workforce needs, as we change, skills that our workforce has to have change. For example, when I went to college a few years ago, I never had a computer in college, right?
Navicus.
Yeah, exactly. That's enough out of you. Yes, I actually did use a slide rule in high school. My first chemistry class, it's amazing what you can do with a slide rule. Must be an engineer. But county workforce at that time probably didn't think about being computer illiterate as a workforce need, but now, a lot of the work that citizens interact with county government is through that technology. So we know there are going to be changes like that, so this objective deals with that. Another one is service delivery methods. Commissioner Kofolas and Commissioner Donnelly both talked about the aging demographics in our community. There are a lot of demographic shifts that are happening in Colorado today, and how we deliver services may change. A growing demographic, a group may have a different way of outreaching them, or responding to them, or delivering services. So that's something we want to make sure we're on the cutting edge of. The county has a tremendous amount of data on people. We have information about every one of you down in the Fort Collins courthouse, believe it or not, your property, your marriage license, birth certificates, vital statistics, some of that's done at the state. But we have a tremendous amount of data, and a lot of that is siloed in different departments. And there's a lot of repetition with providing that data. Human Services has a ton of data on folks, and we believe that maintaining privacy and maintaining confidentiality is obviously a top concern, but there may be opportunities for departments to share that data, use that data, and learn from that data to deliver services without compromising any of those other things. So that's one of the things we're looking at. The final thing is environmental responsibility. We have an environmental science advisory board, which advises the commissioners on environmental questions, and we have used them a number of times, given them topics to talk about, whether it's asphalt plants, typically it's land use things that come up with, to us, but it, because they tend to affect the environment quite a bit. But we know that as we grow in population, as more people move here, there is the potential for impacts to our quality of life by those additional people, and there is the potential to compromise the environment, environmental quality in Laramo County. So our environmental science advisory board is really experts. They're not politicians, they're scientists. So we want to make sure that all of our environmental policies are examined, so that they are sound, based in science, and that they meet the challenges that we expect to face in the future of the county. So that is goal number three.
Wonderful job, gentlemen. I mentioned that we would, we'd be happy to take your question, or your questions on any subject you should, you would like to ask us about, but first, we'd like to ask if there are any questions specifically related to our strategic plan that maybe we could handle first. Tom, go ahead.
Hi, thanks. I wondered as far as the plan, you mentioned growth, that's a big part of it, you know, how are you going to manage growth with respect to new things, but also protecting property rights of people already there? So as you probably know, Estes Park is struggling with words and zoning and ordinance to define what commercial park and rec activities can be done in residential zones. And so I'd like to ask you, either based on your existing ordinances, or extra work, spinoffs, insights, whatever, from your work with the strategic plan, how have you addressed protecting property rights with respect to residential zones and people who actually live there, to live there in single-family homes? And how do you specifically limit the amount or degree of commercial activities, particularly park and rec, since that seems to be the hot issue this month? What have you done, and is there anything that you can maybe pass on as learnings to our trustees?
That's a great question. Thanks, Tom. Next question. Let's go.
Great, great answer. I knew you would jump right on that.
Yeah, you know, land use is tough, right? It's a tough issue. It's difficult for us to comprehend it, because it actually is, and you've alluded to this, it's a little different than most of the other aspects of the way that we operate our local governments, right? I mean, the Constitution gives you specific rights to use your property as you see fit. Courts have held a longstanding tradition that the land use regulations are constitutional as well, that you, that local governments have the right to regulate land use as they see fit. And so as a member of a body, a decision-making body, which looks at land use, I can tell you from a very high level, what you seek, and maybe you think we've done a great job, maybe you think we've done a terrible job, I don't know, but I can just tell you this. What I seek, and I know my colleagues agree, at least at this high level and principle, is that we seek balance, right? There are property rights that are held by applicants, and there are property rights across the fence that are held by adjoining properties, by neighbors, by folks in the vicinity. And so what you, I think what you try to do in land use, through the process, through the public process, is mitigate, to the extent you can, the negative aspects of an application. You can't totally mitigate all impacts from a development, of course. There will always be impacts, but what you want to try to do is create regulation or condition in which you feel that the land uses can coexist, right? And so that's our charge. That's the sausage-making of local government. You know, you don't want to see how sausage is made, but you hope it tastes good when you open it and put it on the grill. And well, that's kind of, and that's what we try to do. So I don't know if you think we've done a great job at that, if you think we've done a terrible job at that. I think you probably think we've done a fairly inadequate job of that, and frankly, I kind of agree with you. And I'm sure someone's going to bring up my comments at my, at our work session last week, that, you know, but I'll give you a really great concrete example of that, was allowing short-term vacation rentals in residential neighborhoods, right? That had tremendous, that had a more significant impact on residential neighborhoods than anything else we have done since, or we will ever do. And I voted for that. And I think that maybe in a little bit, we can talk a little bit at greater length and detail about maybe some of the, some of our, kind of the interesting aspects of our planning area up here, and how it kind of led to some of this, I think, and contributed to it at least. But at a high level, I mean, it's a balance. I mean, trying to find, trying to find that sweet spot where someone can have access to their property to try to do what they want, protect the rights of the neighbor, that's what we always strive to do. And we have different opinions all the time. We have split votes all the time. We had one last week, in fact, on a wedding, a wedding facility near Berthoud. We had a 2-1 vote, just a week ago. So, yeah, all going to be land use?
No.
Okay, go ahead, good. Doyle, go ahead.
About the strategic plan.
Oh, good.
I have two questions that are related, so I'll ask them at the same time. Commissioner Kofolas mentioned that there is alignment between the strategic plan and the comprehensive plans that haven't yet been adopted, and yet the comprehensive plans are much more comprehensive naturally. So how was that alignment actually achieved, and how were priorities set? And then the related question is, two of the three of you are here through next year, and then after that-
Eighteen months, but who's counting?
Okay. After that, there's new commissioners, and yet 11 of the 13 objectives call for deliverables after 2020. So you have a subset of comprehensive in establishing the plans for the strategic, and yet you did so knowing that two of the three commissioners will actually be replaced, and there may actually be new objectives with the new commissioners later on. So how, how do all of these align?
Well, I, do you want to try that, John? Yeah, go ahead.
What's your name?
Doyle.
Doyle?
Doyle.
Nice to meet you, Doyle. So I just want to make sure I understood, there are two questions embedded in there. One, as I understand it, has to do with the five-year strategic plan, as we described in the various objectives, and how that, quote, aligns with the 20-year visionary document, the comp plan. And then the second question, I think, had to do with regard to our five-year goals and objectives. Many of those are achievable after the 2020 elections, where the, regardless of one's political affiliation, the composition of the board will change. So regarding question number one, I would say the following. So if you look at the six areas that have been identified in the comprehensive plan, and these areas or issues include affordable housing, include infrastructure, include watersheds and natural resources, health and social economics, so all of those six areas, and those came to us from the work done in 2017 regarding the mountain resiliency plan, and hopefully some of you folks were involved in that, as well as the work done in 2018 with regard to the front-range area plan. So I would offer that that's how they align, in that whether it's economic opportunity, that's critical for so many things, whether it's infrastructure, transportation, and broadband, that's in there, and then, of course, providing services to a growing population and trying to be smarter. So that would be my response to your, yes, sir, Doyle, yeah.
I guess I misworded. It wasn't that they are or not aligned, but how was that alignment achieved? Because you set priorities among the comprehensive plans when establishing, as you call them, the inward objectives for the county to work on with respect to the comprehensive plan.
Let me just follow up, and then I can turn it over to you folks, and if you want, I can try to answer the second question. But I would, further understanding your question, so the goals that, the strategic plan that we're going to adopt, those look at specific objectives to achieve this year, 2020, 2021. And so you could, like, for example, with housing, we have long-term goals as far as housing inventory, the role of the county, but some of the stuff that's in the comp plan could be part of the strategic plan, and that's what we would be achieving in the next couple of years. So I think that, that's my answer to your question. Then as far as, I was going to say something else, but it kind of slipped out, but the other aspect of it is that, you know, we are the body that makes up, you know, this board, and I think overall, we're, you know, we're working well together, and we've identified these goals as really important, and a lot of it's coming from the folks that we serve. And so no matter who's here in 2020, and I guess I'll have a lot of the fun to make sure these things are implemented, we agree right now that this is important, we want to put something in place, and I think that whether it's a comp plan, or whether it's a strategic plan, those are always meant to be, quote, "living documents," and they can be adjusted, altered, based on, you know, changing realities. That's my answer.
I just want to add a couple things to that, and John's exactly right. I think we started this process probably before you were sworn into office, but this-
But I made it better. Oh, no, no.
Yes. You've added a lot.
It's a living document.
This strategic plan, and the prior strategic plan, the way they started was with community input. We do a citizen survey, a community survey. We held workshops with community leaders, with citizens, and we asked citizens, what do you think some of the most important things are in Laramo County that we're not addressing? So six years ago, one of the top things we heard was mental health needs in the county. So we put that into the very first strategic plan, and that was one of the very last things we achieved to finish the first strategic plan. So these plans are based on what we're hearing from citizens, input from citizens. So regardless of who the three people here are, the needs and inputs of the community are not going to change just because the people change. There might be different ways of looking at them or achieving them, and that can be accomplished, you know, through the process. I view the comprehensive plan and the strategic plan not as closely related, I think, as may have given the impression. The strategic plan, to me, and Linda talked about this, usually says it's the extra credit. It's the things that are emerging, things that maybe we need to address that we may not address otherwise. That's what a strategic plan is. A comprehensive land use plan is something counties, towns, cities are all doing and should be doing. They're not really strategies for the future. They're our responsibilities and our charge day to day, and we have a comprehensive plan, we're updating a comprehensive plan. It will be updated in 20, 10 years or 20 years in the future. So they're related, and they impact each other, but a comprehensive land use plan is implemented through the county ordinance and the land use codes, and that process will happen and will continue. The strategic plan, especially Commissioner Kofolas's goals and your transportation goals, tend to influence land use a little bit, so that may be an input into the code process. But the way the comprehensive plan is put into, given life, is through the land use code. I don't know if that helps, but-
Yeah, and maybe just one other thing. Practically speaking, Doyle, if, you know, commissioner's term is only four years, no, we would never do any strategic planning, because the potential for the board to turn over occurs every election cycle, frankly. And so I guess also practically, there's a reason that the comprehensive plan hasn't really been updated since 1997. Is that when it was, 1997?
I think so, yeah.
And that's because it's, it can be fairly controversial, and so a lot of times, elected bodies don't want to, don't want to take that kind of thing up. And so you've hit the nail on the head. Steve and I are both term limited, and so I think that, I think that staff sees this as an opportunity to move forward with the comprehensive plan. And, but can I just say one more thing about it?
Of course.
Don't for a minute think that we're just ramming something through, though, and I think Steve, Steve made a good point about this. Matt has done, I don't know how much outreach, the guy gained 10 pounds. He went to every pancake fundraising breakfast and for every local fire department, and met with folks throughout the county to develop the mountain section, segment of this plan. And he's down on the plains now, talking with municipalities and folks who live on the, on the flatlands and ag providers and those folks. And so we're doing this with a tremendous amount of public input, to the extent that we can get in touch with people, and he's been very creative in some of the ways that he's, that he's tried to do that. And so I don't know that it matters as much who sits up here. It's done by the folks, by all of us out there, so we think it's a, we think it'll be a good process. Oh, yeah, John, real quick.
Just real quick, and based on the comments that my colleagues made, it's important for folks to understand that once we adopt the comprehensive plan, then that, then we'll embark on a, perhaps a two-year process of updating the land use code. And even if we bring it back to the housing thing as an example, so one of the things we've heard from is that one way of addressing this affordable housing crisis that we have is ensuring that there is a diversity of housing options. So we've heard a lot about, how could we change the land use code to accommodate smaller square-footage homes? And so there's an example where, when we are done with all these plans, we'll start looking at the land use code, and we might be able to make some adjustments to the land use code that help address, you know, this idea of diversity of housing options. Or perhaps, for example, a tiny home on wheels could be considered as an accessory dwelling unit, and maybe there's some compatibility that could be done there. That's how it's going to work.
My question is regarding both the transportation goal and the environmental responsibility goal. You mentioned that it's quite interesting statistic about how many people are commuting long distance from city to city. And so here's the basis of the question. And so, here's the basis of the question. A lot of the low-cost electric vehicles can't do that, you know, they have range limitations. And so, I, my question is, is the county planning, or will they do something to encourage and promote that? And my suggestion would be requiring an ordinance or incentive for requiring larger employers at some threshold, maybe 50, it could start high, 50 employees or more, to install electric charging stations. And so, that the people could just, you know, could, the cheapest electric vehicles will be able to make that commute. That would help the environment, and it would help, it would help all, multiple goals.
Yeah, one of the things they're doing with electric vehicles is, our Loveland office building is going to have electric-
Does, they're there.
Does have electric charging stations. So, us setting an example, having more stations available in various areas of the county is important. I don't know if we would have statutory authority to make a requirement on existing businesses. That is something I think we would have the authority to look at in a land use plan for future approvals. We might be able to do that through our land use powers, but counties are different than towns and cities. We only can do what we have statutory authority to do because we're a subunit of state government. So, that's the first thing we always think about, is do we have the authority to do that? For example, when short-term vacation rentals were an issue here in Estes Park, the town has the ability to license short-term vacation rentals. The county does not. So, that requires us to take some additional approaches to that. But yes, it is, that is something we will look at it, that we're interested in.
And it's, yeah, and I'll just tell you a funny story. It's actually an Estes Park story. I had a guy come to one of my citizen meetings once, and he was, he was upset with me, and he's, and he said-
They all are.
I know. Well-
I had to substitute one time.
Nobody ever comes to tell you you're doing a good job, right? They only come when there's something that's bothering them. No, this guy came and he said, hey, you guys at the county, your guys at the county are not keeping the lines on the, on the county road system painted bright enough. You were there, right? You heard this guy. He's mad at me. He said, the lines aren't bright enough. My self-driving Tesla can't find the lane lines, and so, I actually have to hold the steering wheel when I drive into your meeting. I said, that's a hell of a problem to have, man. I said, I'm sorry. I'm really sorry for you. But, yeah, it's, it's, it's the way of the future, and it's going to provide, you know, we talk about, you know, one thing that would really mitigate congestion would be this advent of self-driving cars, right? And so, we know that technology is coming, and not only is it going to be better for the environment, but it's going to cut down on, on, you know, driver-caused crashes. It's going to, I mean, the cars are going to be able to be closer together. There's not going to be that opportunity for operator errors that exist now. I've got a teenage son, and I can tell you, there's plenty of operator error that goes on. And so, yeah, we think it's a, we think it's a, there's going to be a lot of great technological change that's going to, that's going to impact people's abilities commute in very positive ways, I think.
When you start a planning process, it seems to me, the beginning point is always to have a really clear understanding of where you stand right now. And I think your, your discussion of, with the community people, what, what they see as issues, I think, is a good start. But there was a comment that was made at your last meeting down in the valley that just kind of surprised me and confused me.
That was me.
The comment was that Estes Park is dying.
I said that.
Okay? And, you know, number one, I don't understand that because I don't see it. But number two is, if Estes Park is dying, and that's your perspective, then it will affect what your motivation is. Is your motivation to get Estes Park somehow growing, increase our population? I mean, so, help me on those two issues. Is Estes Park dying? And if it is dying, then what is the county trying to do about it?
Yeah, I think, I think we are trying to work on it, and I think we're going to talk about it in the second half of this meeting. Yeah, it was a, I said it in a moment of, kind of, kind of a passionate moment, but in fact, I kind of do stand by the comment, and I'll tell you why. I have been in this office for a full decade. I know so many people in this room, and I, and I consider them friends, which is not something that happens very easily in my line of work. And I'll tell you, I've never seen a stark of a divide in this community as I've seen very recently. And it's, and it's, frankly, I think it's terrible. It's horrible. And I, and I think that all of us need to take maybe two steps in towards the middle. And I, I think that people have staked out very extreme positions, and I think the way to solve that is, is for us to not be reactionary, but to really look at a more, at more comprehensive solutions. I talked a little bit ago about things that we've done, like short-term vacation rentals, a lot of these land use types of issues, and it's created, some of this, some of this, some of these things that have happened have created a lot of discord. And I think we need to, we need to keep an eye on what the real goal is, and frankly, you know, this, this community is, is, there's not very many young folks here, right? I don't know how many kids are in the school now, but it's, it's decreased dramatically. And anybody here would tell, how many kids are in the school, Sherri?
Graduation.
No?
The recent class is about 71 last week.
Seventy-one?
Graduation.
That's actually pretty good.
Class of 14, our granddaughter was in, they had over 100.
Yeah, well, so, that's, I guess, a 30% decrease. So, I do think, I do think that the community needs to, to find a way to, to bring in younger families, to bring in kids, to develop a year-round economy. I think that those things are important. And so, I think if you don't do those things, you will. You'll be, you'll be a, a community of, of a very, a lot of retirees and a lot of tourists. And I don't, I don't think that's what we want. I think we want more of a balance. And so, that's where, that's the basis of my, of my remarks. But I'd be happy to talk about it in a little bit in greater detail. I'm sure someone else will, will ask me about it as well. Now, we're going to open the second part of our meeting. It's going to be Q and A. You can ask us anything you want, I guess. I mean, we don't, if we can, we'll, I'll probably take a stab at answering anything. Go ahead. I'm, I'm term limited. Hell, I'll answer. I'll answer anything.
I noticed that there is nothing about recreation on any of your goals and so forth, like bicycle easements in the county for more bicycling. That's how we stay young.
Yeah, good. You are, you're doing a great job of it, too, by the way. I will tell you, our transportation planning effort, I mentioned that we had a technical group and a, and a policy level group, and those folks put together a list of infrastructure projects that they felt would really benefit the county in the future. Perhaps I wasn't clear enough. Those were, those included a number of multimodal types of projects. In fact, the projects submitted by Estes Park, I believe, Linda, I'm looking at you, are both multimodal, are they not? Do you remember, Frank? I think they both are. I think they both are enhancements to Highway 34 and Highway 36 that would incorporate greater access for pedestrians, bicycles, and, and things like that. In Fort Collins, it's, it's very common to try to prioritize, you know, underpasses and things like that. So, yeah, it's a, it's a, I think it's a pretty well-rounded plan that looks at roadway capacity and multimodal types of uses as well. We try to, we try to be mindful of that as well. And as the county urbanizes, it'll be more important than ever. Yeah. Yes, sir, Tom. Second bite at the apple. He didn't get his question answered the first time.
Well, yeah, that's true, but I mean, so, the IGA that is under consideration renewing it, looks, it sounds to me, from just watching trustee meetings, that there is probably four trustees plus some mayor who are working pretty hard to make sure that that doesn't Is there any kind of legal requirement to have, like, a public hearing input with respect to whether we reissue that or whether we don't? And I don't really see one really great reason on the town's part for not doing it. I think more, the more heads you have, perhaps the better and fairer it would be in terms of going forward, representing all people in the valley, not just a few.
When you said you don't see a reason for not doing it, what do you mean by, yeah?
So, if I was, to renew the IGA, so if I was, you know, on a town board, and I expressed opinion that, which some of them already have before there's been any discussion, I don't think we should, we need it. Things like, well, people in the county are different than people in Estes Park. Really? I mean, that's a dumb comment. So, why, is there any legal system by which we, as members of the town, can try to have a more open discussion with the county? Because I'm in favor, and I don't know why, what the big reason is, why those, some people in town government do not want to renew it.
Okay. I happen to agree with you, by the way. I don't know if there's a legal requirement for us to hold a public hearing on an intergovernmental agreement, but we'll do one, we'll do so, whether there is or not. That's just the way we operate, whether we're told to or not. So, I wanted to give a little bit of background. For the last, how long have we had the joint, 10, 15, 20?
It's been almost 20 years.
For the last 20 years, we have had a cooperative planning agreement with the town of Estes Park, which is really pretty unique in the history of Colorado. Before that, the town had an, had an ordinance, the town had a planning commission. Applications in the town limit went to the town's planning commission, and I guess could be approved there and could be appealed to the town board. And unincorporated residents applied to the county's land use staff, operated under the Laramie County Land Use Code. A hearing in Fort Collins before the Laramie County Planning Commission, which I was on 20 years ago, had one member from Estes Park, Wendell Amis, probably a lot of you remember Wendell. So, those were here, heard by the county planning commission, and our county planning commission makes a recommendation to the county commissioners, and then we hold a public hearing on those. It was decided that the Estes Valley is kind of a unit, and there would be advantages to coordinated planning in, in the town and in the unincorporated areas. So, that took the form of an IGA, which we're operating under right now, which has a number of things. It has one regional planning commission, which has appointees from the town and appointees from the Board of County Commissioners. They're all Estes Park residents, valley or town residents. And what I like about that is those applications go to you all that live here in your community. The other aspect of that is a common development code, which has to be adopted and changed identically by both bodies. Kind of an interesting process, that we both have to agree exactly on the wording. That has resulted in some consistent development patterns and zoning in Estes Park and development. There, there has been a lot of discussion, because of some recent applications, about how that process is working. Can it be improved? Should it be changed? Should it be abandoned? And we go back to the way we did things before. So, there've been a lot of opinions on that, and we've talked about that, and haven't really had some very clear direction. I want to compliment the town manager because he's put a proposal on the table to us in a letter that he sent to us, and a very detailed proposal. We have copies of it. That is a, the advantage of having that is now we have a document to start looking at and thinking about it. It's hard to change things unless you've got a starting point. So, I'm very appreciative of that. I have some real concerns about that. I like the present arrangement. I think there needs to be some changes to it. The reason I'm giving a little bit of this history is because I think there will be some changes to it. The way the cooperative agreement and the intergovernmental agreement now works, it requires both parties to, it's like a marriage. It requires both parties to agree to continue this agreement. So, if the town board doesn't want to continue it, we won't, because it requires, either party can end it at any time. And that's appropriately, appropriately so, and that's the way it operates. So, what's going to happen is, over the next few months, there is going to be a pretty extensive public process of open houses, outreach efforts, public forums, discussions like this, and we're going to look at the proposal from the town, and we're going to look at, because they have, it has pros and cons, right? So, we're going to look at that, and we're going to have a community discussion. And really, what I think about the arrangement is, my opinion is the least important in this room. You guys live in this community. There are serious, significant implications of either avenue that we go down for your community where you live. So, what needs to happen, in my opinion, is what is best for you all and what you want to happen. I happen to like the arrangement. I think Commissioner Donnelly alluded to, there may be differences of opinion. I've noticed this in talking to county folks in the unincorporated parts of the county. I think a lot of folks in the town have maybe a different opinion. A lot of businesses in the town want to see more vitality in the community, maybe some more growth, more density, some more height, right, in the community. And I think some of my friends in the county say, you know, we're retired here, we don't want to see that change. So, there is some differences of opinion. The joint agreement, the way it is now, whenever we change the code, requires those differences to be reconciled by our two bodies to make, before we make any change. I kind of like that, because I think it forces us to find common ground. If those opinions are so divergent, and the town has a totally different opinion than the unincorporated area, then we probably should go down the proposal that's been submitted by the town. Maybe those, maybe it's no longer to our advantage to have this joint agreement. Maybe there's enough differences. And there are other aspects, too. I don't want to get too complicated, but the current situation takes away any incentive or opportunity, really more incentive, for the town to annex. So, the town isn't growing because, under the current agreement. Well, the agreements that we have with Fort Collins and Loveland, and we can make those work. We won't approve any commercial developments unless they, if they're eligible for annexation, unless they annex, and that, that's very helpful. So, we as a community, you as a community, need to have a discussion about this, an informed discussion. You need to fully understand the pros and cons of this, because it's a very important decision. And we, as leaders on the town board and on the Board of County Commissioners, need to listen to you all and hopefully chart a course that meets the needs of the community.
Is that letter from Franklin made widely?
We have copies of it. It's a public document. We have copies of it.
Why don't you make that open to the public so we can begin to-
I think we just got it two days ago.
Are you making it public?
We brought copies.
It is public. Is it public?
Yeah. It's a public document. We brought copies.
That's, that's-
It's actually, it's actually a very, it's actually a very good proposal.
Hold on.
I mean, I have concerns about it. It's actually a very good proposal, and I think it's very helpful, because we do need something to react to. We do, you know, we can't have 12 different opinions about how we do this. It brings order to the process. I think that's very helpful. And, and actually, we're, we're, we're kind of just talking with the town about how to, what's, how, what the best way to conduct that public process is.
Watching a football game back there? Baseball game?
It was more interesting than me, apparently. But we need, we're just now having a discussion with the town, because we want to do this in a way that's respectful of citizens' time and citizens' input, and gets good information out, and then gets, gets everyone's input, so that just the loudest people don't get heard. So, I think the town is looking for a very thoughtful public process on this, and they actually want a much longer process than we proposed. So, I'm, I'm very supportive of that. I don't know if any of that makes sense.
No, it didn't make any sense.
Okay.
So, hold on.
So, you can correct it.
Yeah, good. So, I get, I want to make sure that everyone understands, there's not just two options.
Right.
It's not just continue with our joint planning agreement or have nothing. I mean, there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of space in between. We have eight municipalities wholly or partially in Laramie County, and with most of those communities, we have some type of agreement, intergovernmental agreement, contract, if you will, that dictates how growth occurs and when it can occur. What are you doing?
I just want to-
Oh, okay, we'll get you one. And so, maybe Leslie Ellis, our Community Development Director, might come up and talk a little bit about what we do in some other areas of the, of the county. I know some things like, the, the town is probably, I think I speak for the town board when I say they're probably not very interested in, in doing, providing planning services for the county anymore. That's fine. You know, the county can, we can take on our own app, development review. And so, there's things that are contemplated in that, in that letter that, that we're probably wholeheartedly supportive of, and, and things that we'll negotiate over the course of our, of our public process. Leslie, why don't you talk just a little bit about what, what we do at some of our other areas?
Sure. And I'll be brief-
Even though they're not joint planning areas, they're actually fairly similar to how we operate here in a lot of ways.
Yeah, and, and I'll be brief, because I, the airtime here is really for you all. But we just received a letter about a week ago. At the staff level, we've been talking back and forth about how to do an engagement process to allow more input around this topic of what is the future of the intergovernmental agreement between the town and the county to do cooperative planning. So, there will be more opportunities to hear more from you and get input, but there is this proposal on the table, and we've been looking at that very closely. And so, as, as Tom, as Commissioner Donnelly mentioned, we have agreements with City of Fort Collins, with City of Loveland, with Berthoud, and Windsor, all where we do cooperative planning with those municipalities. In each case, they have defined a growth management area, and they- we have agreements with City of Fort Collins, with City of Loveland, with Berthitt and Windsor all, where we do cooperative planning with those municipalities. In each case, they have defined a growth management area and they have annexation policies that are addressed in those intergovernmental agreements. If a development comes to the town or the county and it's eligible for annexation, most of those agreements say go talk to the town first about annexation. And so that the, the comprehensive plan in most cases for those jurisdictions extends beyond the city limits and covers the area that might be that growth management area or beyond that so that the local jurisdiction has some, has some say in what the future of, of growth at the edges of the community might be. And there are a lot of other nuances in those agreements. But I think as you heard from both of these gentlemen, there, there are a lot of different ways of, of how we could work together in the future and not having the same agreement that you have now doesn't mean not having an agreement and not being able to work cooperatively. And so I think those, that's the conversation we want to have with the community, between the county and the town about, you know, what kind of agreement is going to serve you well going forward into the future. And I think, as you heard from Commissioner Johnson, the one that we've had for the past twenty years has served us well. It's time to look at it again, mostly because it expires in eight months and it's time to have that conversation about what the future might be, so.
I did, yeah, I did know that.
Back to the comprehensive plan. Several years ago, somebody came up from Fort Collins, I think it was when we were deciding on the Loop project, the, you know, the changing of the roads and stuff. And they met, they had a lot of different sessions with the community. And what came out of that was what was most important to people who lived here. Number one was keeping the beauty of the area. Number two was the wildlife. And the more building up of the community was not even mentioned. So, when we come to the comprehensive plan, every time that there has been a, something that is going to be built here and the planning commission tries to use the comprehensive plan as a reason not to do something, legally, the people who come before the board, they say the comprehensive plan has no place in this. It's only according to the development code. And I think the people here are, you know, a lot of people in town agree with the people who are not in town but are in the Estes Valley on this. But we're not listened to. Even when there are public forums and people speak out, nothing is done for the, for the residents and the people who really don't want such extreme growth and growth that is mainly to provide things for tourists who are coming here.
So, I think that, I think the argument is perhaps a little more nuanced than that. And I'm going to ask Matt LaFerdy, our Principal Planner, to come up and talk about that. The, the, the real issue is when you don't update your comprehensive plan frequently enough, but you do make changes to your land use code, then they, then they tend to be out of sync with one another. They are by design supposed to be complementary, right? Your land use code is actually supposed to be informed by your comprehensive plan. Your comprehensive plan, even though it's comprehensive, it's a high-level overview of how you want your community to look, how you want it to develop, what you want to occur there. A land use code is supposed to inform that. That's the on-the-ground implementation strategies of your comprehensive plan. Is that, I, I hope I'm saying that in a way that you think is okay, Matt, you're the professional. I'm just the politician.
So why has it come about?
Hold on.
That they are so far?
Well, I mentioned it earlier. Practically, politicians don't typically like to mess with comprehensive plans or land use codes because it's not good for your, your political lifespan, I guess, maybe. I don't know. And, and they, and they're, because they're controversial, right? I mean, they bring out strong feelings in people. Matt's done an outstanding job. I mean, I, I went to one meeting where a lot of people yelled at me in Berthitt, but other than that, I don't think there's been much yelling. And that was just because I was there. But, do you want, do you want to talk a little bit about, about how those, how those documents are supposed to complement one another?
And then, and the comp plan, Commissioner Donnelly is correct. The comp plan is intended to inform future land use decisions that are implemented through years.
Yeah, that's the other thing.
And so, one of the ways to implement it, which I haven't seen a community do it, would be to adopt a comprehensive land use plan and then turn around and rezone their entire community to match that plan. But you would be rezoning your community every time you update your plan and that's unreasonable expectation to do. Because not everybody wants to upzone or move their property values based upon zoning. And so, a comprehensive plan is just put into place to cause that informing of what the future might look like. And then as people come in, they should, they should make proposals aligned with your comprehensive plan. But your land use code has to be aligned with that to make sure that those strategies in that comprehensive plan are implemented through that land use practice. If they're not aligned, it never will work. And for years, the county zoning, in our case, has been modified over years and years and years and the comp plan is set quietly on a shelf and we're out of sync. And so, we finally have come back around and we're getting ourselves in sync again. And we're going to follow up our efforts with a complete rewrite of our land use code when we're done with that.
No.
A lot of protections of wildlife have just been done away with. Every time that there is, you know, any development that goes on, they, they even tell the Department of Parks and Wildlife that they have no say. Even if they say you're, you're, the animal corridor or whatever it is, is going to be destroyed. They, they say it doesn't matter.
I'm, I'm not sure that that's completely, Greg is next, but Commissioner Johnson had an interesting point he wanted to make.
One of the other things about updating a comprehensive plan is it's, it's very expensive. It's very staff-intensive. It calls upon the community to spend a lot of citizen time being involved with it as well. So it's not something you want to do every year either. There's something interesting in the Estes Park Development Code, which I've never seen anywhere else. And it requires the planning commission to see that there's compliance with the land use code, which it happens everywhere. But it also requires a planning commission to see that there's compliance with the comprehensive plan. And sometimes, as those have gotten divergent, it puts the planning commission to, into a difficult situation because they've got to reconcile those things. That's kind of unique to Estes. I, I don't know what you were asking about, can we change the land use code? Yes. The current situation is the town board and the county commissioners have to agree on any changes to the land use code. That can happen. If we set, if we end the cooperative agreement, the commissioners can change the land use code in the county. The town, town board can change the land use code in the town. My suspicion is over time, those codes would get divergent probably and be different. We cannot go back on any application or development that has been approved in the past and apply any changes retroactively to that, however.
Yeah, so, so just a point of clarification. Matt did most of the work on the comp plan himself, so he's, he's our full-time county employee. But still, the cost, I think of our comp plan is running around three hundred, three hundred fifty thousand dollars to do an update on the, on our comp plan.
Hundred sixty-five thousand was in grants.
Hundred what?
Hundred seventy thousand was in grants.
Hundred seventy thousand, what we received grants for, that's great, good news, good work, Matt. A land use code amendment or change, a minor change can be done pretty quickly and, and with, without much cost. And so that's how that happens over two decades, that your code can, can change significantly and your comp plan didn't. Greg? Yeah, it's on.
All right.
You don't need a microphone, dude.
No, hey, first of all, I want to thank all three of you for coming up here. We're a very small constituent, I think three percent. And you take a whole day, you come up here and listen to a very highly educated but a lot of time on people's hands and, and they, they really do attack the issues more strongly. If you drive down to Fort Collins, Loveland, you got a hell, excuse me, a lot of development going on and you're doing a great job and really appreciate your time. So this comp plan stuff, you just got it, what, two days ago? I'm sure there's going to be a lot of discussion coming up on that, all right? And so, I, I want to move something off. My house went up thirty percent on taxes, okay? How does that happen? I mean, each year, since we've been up here. So, I never got a raise, I worked for thirty years for major oil companies. I never think I ever got a thirty percent raise in one year. So I was thinking about just getting like a couch and sitting on the front porch and make money watching my house go up. So, how does, how does the land actually got that expensive up here that quick in one year?
Okay, so, the valuation of properties is done by the county assessor, independent elected officials. We can't tell them what to do. They're very heavily regulated by the Division of Property Taxation in the Colorado Department of Local Affairs. Because they, that valuation of property collects property tax for a lot more entities than just Laramie County. As a matter of fact, we only get a quarter of that property tax. The assessor is required to look at sales data in the market in, in valuing these properties. Obviously with a hundred and fifty thousand, some parcels, a hundred fifty-three thousand, they don't look at each piece and say, you know, Greg's property, eh, hasn't been painted. There is computer modeling that looks at sales in the area and, and makes kind of a judgment, a broad estimation of, of what similar properties would. It's not perfect. That's why there's the protest or appeals process for that. You can do that through the month, through June third in the assessor's office. If you don't like what they tell you, then you can go to the Board of Equalization, which are people qualified in property valuation that we appoint. My house went up fifty-six percent. So what I did, you go to the assessor's.
Mine went up twenty-five percent.
I wish, I wish. So what I did, you go on the assessor's site and you can look and, and there's a tab you can click for sales in your neighborhood and sales in the area. I looked at all the sales that occurred in my neighborhood and I concluded that that was about right. I think my property had been underevaluated before. There, properties are really going up all over the county. Now, overall residential properties countywide went up eighteen percent, so that's the overall. It's, it's every two years, by the way. So it's, to you, it's thirty percent all at once, but it's not thirty percent a year.
Thirty percent every year since I've been here.
Well, it's two, every two years.
Every two years, every, every two years, every two years. We only, we only revalue property, the assessor only revalues property every two years. So if, if it doesn't fit with what you've seen in your neighborhood with marketplace sales and there's a period of time that you have to look back, go through the appeals, appeals process.
No, I appreciate that.
I know, that's why people can't afford houses, but we don't control the marketplace.
We're talking about affordable housing, so.
I know.
You're marketing, you're out the bargain, I have to move.
Anything we do, anything we do in affordable housing is not going to change the housing market. The housing market is a multi-billion dollar market. And we're going to help people on the margin maybe afford houses and, and maybe some subsidies of rents and stuff like that. But we're not going to stop the growth of housing prices in Laramie County, we're just not. I mean, that's a market that, we're just not going to change that.
Frankly, it's a function of how much land's available and how much water's available. And there's less every single day and so housing is only going to get more expensive. But I would say this, so Steve mentioned this, I want to restate it. The assessor values a hundred and sixty thousand parcels in this county. That's a lot of work and they do it every two years. And so they use mass appraisal to do it. And so, you know, the people that live across the street from me, their home's back up to a private lake. My house backs up to Wilson Avenue, one of the busiest roads in Loveland. And so, no, but we're prob, we're all part of that same, you know, neighborhood that he assesses. And so, absolutely, you should, you should look at your value and make sure that you think your value is fair. And you should by all means protest. We don't want you to pay more, we don't want your house to be valued at more than it truly is worth. And I think appraisal ends, you have to protest by tomorrow?
June third.
June third?
June third, and you can do it online.
You can do it online.
You don't need to come down to Fort Collins, you can do it online.
If you have any question at all, go home tonight and look it up on the internet, on the website. Take a glance at it, see what you think. And by all means, we want an accurate, we want an accurate valuation roll. I mean, we want that to be accurate. That's our number one goal of our county assessor. And, and so if you, if you think that there's an issue, by all means protest.
And one more thing I want to say is that the increase in valuation does not necessarily translate directly into an increase in taxes. The valuation is multiplied by a mill levy which results in taxes. Two times in the past, this Board of County Commissioners, Gator and Donnelly and I, reduced the county mill levy after one of these reappraisals. Because frankly, we didn't need that much additional revenue to fulfill our duties and obligations. I said, values went up eighteen percent, our revenue is going to go up about twelve percent. Residential values went up eighteen, our.
Commercial.
Yeah, revenue is going to go up twelve percent because commercial didn't go up as much. So, in, in looking at the budget, we haven't made this decision yet, but in looking at the budget, we don't need a twelve percent increase next year to fulfill our obligations. So we have directed the budget folks to, to, to look at another mill levy reduction on the part of the county. The bad news is we're only one quarter of the property tax mill levy that you pay. No other entity in Laramie County, in the forty years that I have lived here, has voluntarily reduced their, their mill levy. But that's all we can address. We don't, we don't want to take more tax money than we need. We don't want to do that.
Yeah, we gave that tax credit two years ago and four years ago. We're the only entity that I know of that's ever done that in this county. And we're looking at doing the same thing again, so. But like Steve said, we're, we're a fairly small percentage of your, of your overall mill levy. Now, one other thing, real quickly, I know Michelle's going to kill me for taking too much time. There's a, we're talking about values right now, but values do inform taxes, right? And there are other things that we can do to help people that, that maybe have trouble with their tax, with their tax, with their tax bills. There's a, there's a senior tax exemption that's funded by the state. You know, you have to sign up, I think, the first time to get that, to get on the roll, don't you? I think you do. We have a, we have some tax rebates that we can give to folks who are veterans. We have a really vigorous property tax, senior property tax work-off program in the county where you can work off a portion of your, of your property tax by going out and help volunteering at the county fair or sometimes people volunteering in our open spaces and parks and things like that. So, there's a lot of avenues for, you're not old enough, of course, to take advantage of any of that, Senac. But, for, for some of our seniors, we have some, we have some great programs that we can help people mitigate some of the effects of their, of their tax increases. Yeah, John?
So just specifically on the senior homestead property tax exemption, how many people are aware of that?
Yeah.
And, and again, I just want, this is an example where we need to make sure that folks, that folks are informed. And the way it works, it was put into the Constitution in, in two thousand. So it's one of the constitutional amendments that has fiscal implications. But essentially, if you're sixty-five and older and you've been living in your home for ten consecutive years as your primary residence, you can get a fifty percent tax break on the first two hundred thousand dollars value of your home. And, and the last time I looked, it was an average tax reduction, property tax reduction of about six hundred dollars. So please make sure that if you have neighbors and those, the folks who might benefit from this, you know, especially if they're on lower incomes or fixed incomes, to take advantage of. And I think the deadline is July fifteenth to apply for the, the first time, thank you.
And one thing you should all do, this is one, I'm just going to editorialize, so Michelle's rubbing her temple over there. You should tell your state legislators to give seniors a one-time opportunity to jump to a, a different property and, and retain their, their exemption. Right now, you have to live in your house for ten years, right? So we've got a bunch of houses here where we could actually, young families could actually buy some of these houses, right? If the people who are living there weren't incentivized to stay in their homes because of the tax break, right? So if we let people jump down to a condo and, and retain that, that tax incentive, that would be a great thing to do as far as moving younger folks into some of our housing. That's my personal editorializing. Who's got it? There you go, second time.
Following up on the budget topic, the, in your brochure here, it says that total county income is four hundred eighty-six million. Total county operating budget is two hundred fifty-eight million. In other words, the income is nearly twice the budget. So are you building a big rainy day fund or what's happening?
Hey, we're fiscal conservatives, man, what do you want? Now, I, real high level and we'll move, I mean, I know we're being, we're getting tight on time. At a really high level, the county does a tremendous amount of double counting with regards to our revenue, right? So we say our budget is four hundred eighty million dollars. We, we double count money all the time. A lot of our funds are, are federal pass, and state pass-through funds for, for entitlement programs and things like that. We count that in our budget. Maybe it's food stamps and things like that. They come, we count them in our budget, but we don't really ever handle the money. They're, they're loaded right onto the, to the cards for the, for the participants in the program. But for instance, we might take in money in our general fund, we might put it in our equipment replacement fund. Our road and bridge department might need to go buy a truck, a plow truck. They'll transfer it out of the, out of the, the contingency fund into their budget. And so it isn't actual new money, but we count it, we count it in our equipment fund and we count it in our road and bridge budget. So we do a significant amount of double counting, I guess is the, is the takeaway there.
I think we added about six million to the reserves in the last year. And, the reason that's important is because that's how we paid for the two largest natural disasters in the history of the county. And it's, it's also how we've maintained one of the best bond ratings of any county in the state, which helps us a lot as well.
Absolutely.
But our, our reserves are not, actually they're exactly where the folks recommend. They're about sixteen, the national recommendation is sixteen point eight percent of your operating revenue should be in reserve and we're almost exactly at sixteen percent.
Right. Right. Yeah, and, and just unlike Boulder County, which had to, which had to...
Pass an emergency sales tax.
Pass an emergency sales tax to pay for their flood recovery. Laramie County was able to do it with existing revenues. We dipped into our rainy day reserves. We were able to move on multiple projects at one time because we had such healthy reserves. That money really came in handy. We're one of only two counties in the state of Colorado that has Moody's AAA bond rating, and we're very proud of that as well.
John has a comment.
Oh, John, go ahead. And then this lady.
Quick. And also, you know, we're in the midst of our, our budget process for the fiscal year, well, it's the calendar year, but for the 2020 budget. And what I, and I've been learning a lot, but I also understand that in terms of community engagement, which is more and more critical, people don't participate very much in the budget process. So I would encourage you to do that. There are ways of doing that, of engaging, public information, public meetings. And that can help inform us, you know, what are some of the issues that are important to you as far as the, the county budget, the operating budget, and the capital development budget.
We have the very best attended.
Budget hearing that we do is up here.
I, I show up.
Yeah. Ma'am, go ahead.
Please.
Oh, dear. Completely off-topic here. So...
Thank, thank, thank you for doing that.
So I'm not sure this is gonna be any better for you.
I'm leaving. See you later.
So Laramie County is a right-to-farm county. And our right-to-farm statement claims that we support all types of agriculture in Laramie County. However, land use code does not allow poultry farming of any kind, of any scale.
Doesn't allow what?
Poultry farming of any scale.
Special review.
Yeah, it, you do require special, as a, okay, so as a, as a use by right. You have to go through the special review or special review exception process, which for a small-scale poultry farmer can be an obstacle financially and time-wise. In the past few years, the state has passed laws that support small-scale poultry farming. And I came here tonight to find out how I can get involved in encouraging a review of the land use code to maybe encourage small-scale poultry farming as a use by right.
Yeah, this issue came up with regard to goats, I believe, on small-scale goat operations as well. And we did change the land use code for that.
Yeah.
My understanding of right-to-farm is not that you would allow every agricultural operation in every zone in the county, and I know that's not what you're saying, but is to recognize that an agricultural operation that was here first is gonna have impacts that people that move in later shouldn't complain about and try to shut down and hinder an existing operation. That's, I think, an oversimplistic view of it. But we do update our land use code frequently. The way it happens is citizens give us comments. We have a joint meeting with our planning, the Laramie County Planning Commission, or you may be talking about the joint commission up here. Either way, we have joint meetings. We take that idea to the respective planning commission. We see what they think about it. The staff can develop code language. It goes to the planning commission for a hearing. They give us advice, and then we adopt it as a code change. And we have, we have done that for bee operations, I believe, apiaries. And we've done it for small goat farming operations and in addition to, to many other things. But I think those are the agricultural...
Horse boarding operations. We did a lot of, a lot of different types of things. Yeah, John, go ahead.
Thank you. So one of my liaison roles is with the Ag Advisory Council. And I know this topic has come up a few times, so I think that would be a good connection. The, 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 the chair of the Ag Advisory Council is Zach Thode, who, who works up at Roberts Ranch up by Livermore. And the vice chair is Nick Kuntz, who has a farm. And actually, a couple of weeks ago, I was speaking to someone about this very issue, that they, I don't know if you're connected to that farm, but where, where, are you up here? Pardon?
Clint Pepper from Raising Roots?
No, this, they're actually, they have some farming operation on East Vine, east of the interstate. And this issue was coming up.
Children's Farms.
Pardon?
Yeah, keep moving, John. We're gonna get one more question. Keep going.
Yes, I, I, I'm trying to engage with this person.
You can do it afterward.
There's also something, the, the Laramie County Farmers Alliance, you may wanna connect with those, and I'm happy to talk to you afterwards. Thank you very much.
And one other thing I'd mention is the chairman of our actual county planning commission, Jeff Jensen, is actually in the back of the room. And, and if you're looking for a land use code change, oh, look at their plotting. And so somebody's getting applause tonight. You could, you might engage with him a little bit. And, and so it's something, I, I'll just say this. We've seen, we've seen agriculture, production agriculture in the county changed fairly significantly over the last decade. It's not just large, large farms like it once was. We see everything from mushrooms, growers, I mean, all kinds of different uses. And so we wanna be, we wanna be cognizant of that. Okay, last question. Who's got it?
You're in charge here.
Yeah, one more question? Anybody else? Yeah, you give it to Bob. Okay, Bob. Make it a good one.
No pressure.
Yeah, no pressure.
Well, I was just gonna say, with regard to the joint planning area and this whole approach that we're considering taking, whether we're gonna have it or not, there, my experience in Estes Valley is that there's no difference in the people who live within the county, and if you draw a boundary down the line, and the town, in terms of their views and opinions on issues. The, the differences come is your background. Do you own a business? Are you a developer? Are you a retiree? Those are the kinda things that determine the difference. It's not whether you live in the county or whether you live in the town. And with regard to the planning commission, I can also say that there is not a town contingent and a county contingent, and they vote as blocks. Nothing like that occurs. It is one unit. We all look on the planning commission and all the issues before us. You can look at our voting record. We don't vote along those lines. Most things are, are done. So I just wanted to, this, this point has been made a few times, that somehow the town is underrepresented. Well, it's, it's the, the group looks at themselves as representing the entire valley. And there's no real difference between drawing a line. You know, Carriage Hills has a, has a large zigzag line that runs through it. There's no difference in opinions of people who live on one side of the line or the other. It's your background. So I, I guess I'm not really asking a question, but I'm just saying that there's at least, there's at least one point in this document that is totally false.
Well, I think maybe at a, maybe at a 30,000-foot level, I think that what you've said is true throughout the county and really throughout the region of northern Colorado. Most folks who, even if you live in Windsor or Eaton, and you work in Fort Collins, yeah, you don't really give a damn where your town municipal boundary is or where your county boundary is, frankly. You wanna make sure that, that you can, you can raise your family, that you can get to work, that you can recreate and enjoy your life and have a, and have a great quality of life. So...
Right. But speaking to joint planning, you do want consistency in planning, whether you're on that side of the street in the county or this side of the street in the town. You want consistency.
Understood. All right. So we're trying to be mindful of your time. We went, just, this is actually about as good as we've ever done as far as staying on time, right? And I'm gonna give the, I'm gonna give the board a couple minutes to make closing comments. Start with you, Commissioner Falls. Go ahead.
Just again, to say thank you, you know, this representative democracy that we're all part of is made better when folks participate and engage. I, I think we all get that. And we are living in very divisive times, whether it's Estes Park, Estes Valley, whether it's Colorado, whether it's the nation. And somehow, those of us who are elected, I think part of our responsibility is to create opportunities for community engagement and to do our best to help restore at least some semblance of trust in, in, you know, what it is we do. And frankly, one of the reasons that I decided to go from the legislature, you know, I was down there, don't hold it against me, for 12 years, serving of Senate District 14 and then in the House. But I wanted to get closer to home, continue public service, and set aside the political labels more, so we can try to figure out how we're gonna solve problems. So I think that's important. Those are my closing words.
So I wanna thank you guys, too, for being with us tonight. We like to talk, as you've noticed.
Especially these two.
Yes.
Guilty as charged.
It's because we really do love our job. Our job is very important. We're very excited about what we do. We love interacting with people. That's one, John and I were both in the legislature, and we didn't have that kind of interaction, but we, we do here, and we really like that. There are lots of opportunities to interact with us. I know you can come to Tom's Citizen Meetings up here. But you can email the entire board at, by writing to bocc@lerimer.org. It stands for Board of County Commissioners at laramer.org, and that gets forwarded to all three of us. I'm very good with emails. I am horrible with the telephone. So don't call me, but if you email me, I will get back to you pretty, pretty much right away. Tom is very good with telephones. He's kind of a people person, talks a lot. So, but please feel free to share your views with us.
All the different ways I can connect.
Oh, yeah. Your, your prize card has all the different ways you can connect with the commissioners, and we're very interested in hearing from you.
And, and maybe just, well said, gentlemen. You left very little for me to add. Oh, yeah, great. Everybody's applauding at that. But I will say this. For the last 10 years, I've been really, I, I've been blessed to have the opportunity to represent the people of Estes Park. And I, and I, I think the, the world of, of the fact that you've given me this opportunity, I look forward to the next 18 months of working together with you. I, I think, I, I want us to remember something. We have done tremendous work together on so many fronts, with the town and the county, not just here, but with, with all of our communities in, in, in Laramie County. Little Estes Park, actually, when we developed our plan to expand I-25 down in the valley, Estes Park contributed their road and bridge mill levy increment towards that project because they, they know how important regionalism is. When, when, when Fish Creek Road was destroyed in the 2013 floods, half of that road was in the county and half was in the town. And then there was part of, there was a trail that was owned by a rec district. And there were about five or six different governmental entities that had a different stake in that, in that project. And I, and I think, I hope, I hope that you feel that we all put those, those barriers and boundaries aside and worked for the betterment of the folks who live here. That's really our charge, and that's really our goal. And, and I think we've done a fairly good job of it over the, over the past decade. Again, we'll stick around for a few minutes. If you wanna come up and talk to us about anything that maybe is on your mind, we'd be happy to engage with you. We've got some great staff folks who are, who are happy to do that as well. Thanks a lot for your time. I know there were many things you could've done with your evening. It's probably something on TV, right? Something good? And, and the fact that you chose to spend it with us really means the world to us. Thanks so much for coming out, everybody. Great.